All right. Okay, well then let's call the April meeting of the Norberth, the rescheduled April meeting of the Norberth Planning Commission to order. I will be recording this meeting like I normally do via Zoom. So let's hope that works. Let's do a roll call and see who is present at this meeting. Well, you're you've grabbed the screen. We have Jim Cornwell, are you here?
I'm here.
Jim Spear, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Heidi Boys, are you here?
I'm here.
All right, Dave Brower, are you here?
Yes, I am, I'm here.
Great, and Maggie Dobbs, are you here?
I am here.
Okay, so we have a full attendance of the planning commission. Our agenda has been posted. I'll review it quickly at the beginning for anyone who have it. Tonight, we have announcements and updates, approval of minutes from March, not January, just March. I will provide an update on zoning revisions we submitted to council and on 230 Haverford. And I will ask Maggie to give us an update on the work she's doing with the Saldo and Heritage Action Plan. The bulk of our meeting will spend in a discussion of 5A district planning and following on the topics we discussed at our meeting last month. Ground floor frontages, preservation, station circle, retail and office viability, building heights and parking. And then we'll have a public comment. This meeting is being webcast on the Norberth Civic Association's YouTube channel. And public questions and comment will be accepted tonight by email at norberthplanningcommission@gmail.com. It's spelled just the right way, norberthplanningcommission@gmail.com. All one word, and I don't think it matters if you capitalize it or not. I have that mailbox up on my screen. So if we get any questions or comments, I will work them in when appropriate. So that is the that's the nature of the meeting tonight. Are there any questions about that before we start? Procedural questions? Okay. Last week, I think I circulated minutes from our March meeting. And I wanted to ask if you all had a chance to review those minutes? And if anyone would like to make make a motion to approve the minutes?
I saw a move.
Jim Cornwell moves is our second.
Second.
He's a man of great faith because he actually raised his hand. Assuming we can all. Is there any discussion in the minutes, comments, corrections before we vote?
I would comment that they are encyclopedic.
Yeah.
It's not possible that anything could have been missed in these minutes.
Except for the italic parts where it just says yada, 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 right?
Yeah, those.
Those parts. Okay, so may I have a all in favor of approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved, they'll be posted shortly. I noticed in reviewing the February minutes that we actually had not received or approved the January minutes. And I went through my files and the January minutes aren't yet complete. So we will have to circle back to that in a future month. I will note in January for the public, the commission did post one or two letters to Borough Council. So that for the moment serves as a record of our work in January. I'll move on to my update. I'll start with 230 Haverford action. The, as you know, that we have received tentative sketch plan for new development on what's commonly called the Cook Property. According to the Borough Solicitor, the timeframe for that application is that council must act on it by June 18th. That means that we have potentially two opportunities to discuss that application one in March and one in June. The, as of yesterday or today, actually, the state has actually passed a law which allows municipalities to slow down or delay the consideration of applications that are pending right now. I've consulted with the Borough Solicitor about that. He feels he would he would not prefer at this point to automatically do that and would prefer to ask the applicant for a extension if we felt one was needed. He asked me what my what the commission's preference was, whether we would want to review that application in a virtual meeting or whether we would rather review it in a in a in a physical meeting. And I told him it's always been the planning commission's desire to review this application when we can all be together in one room and where the public can come and be in the same place. And that my my inclination would be to say that we would do that at the next meeting, that that would be possible. So I wanted to ask you all what your feeling was. At the moment, the issue is if we wait till the last minute to review this application, that means there may be very little time for the applicant to respond or engage in modifications before council has to act. You know, if we wait till June. And there's no guarantee an applicant would ask, would agree to a delay. So I'd like to ask you what your feeling is. Would you like to try to review this application at our regular May meeting, which as far as we know is going to have to be a virtual meeting? Or would you rather wait and see what happens in June to see if we can have a real meeting, which at this point, who knows whether we will or won't? What, so I'm just curious what your thoughts are. If anyone has any strong feelings one way or the other.
Well, Todd, I would much rather review an application in in real time in a real meeting when I can see the the faces of the of the people in the conference and when we can see the face of the developer who's making the presentation, when we can properly examine the exhibits that the applicant has provided to us. Hard to do any of those things via Zoom, I would say, based on my recent 10 minutes of experience with Zoom.
How do other people feel?
I agree absolutely. I mean, I I'm curious about not wanting to delay it. It seems like a project like this, a delay might be warranted.
I think.
Anyway, I mean, we could certainly put it off till June. And then if we can't meet in real life in June.
Make a decision.
Make a decision to delay it.
Or whatever. I don't think Mr. Walco, he did not convey to me that he's opposed to seeking an extension. But he said he would prefer to work that out with the applicant rather than simply unilaterally take advantage of the state law. Which, you know, that makes sense, I think, if.
I mean, given the fact that nothing could happen on this parcel for what, two years, three years?
Yeah.
It seems it seems really silly to have to have the initial, you know, meeting regarding it in in a Zoom context, which I think we all agree is is really a difficult way to communicate.
Jim, what do you?
Even even under the best of circumstances, and this is a very complicated, important site, and I would really hate to have to do it under this, you know, kind of process.
Jim Spear, what do you think?
I agree that if we have the chance at seeing this in June, if we have the chance of meeting in person, I mean, I think we ought to take the chance, see if we can get it.
Okay. But we can obviously, it's up to us whether we want to review it in May or June. Which we don't have the answer now is if we're not able to meet in person in June, then what do we do? But I think we can keep the solicitor and the Borough Council apprised and decide later. I did get one comment about this by email from Eric Johnson, the Borough Engineer, who has said he would, his input is that we should try to review this in person. It's allowed to review online, so.
I mean, if I remember correctly, your submission wasn't even nearly complete enough for us to meet about it anyway. Isn't that true?
It was it was it was complete enough for us to review it because the Borough accepted it and asked us to review it. That's kind of a tautology, I understand. But by definition, it's it's ready for us to review. I mean, we might point out things that need to be addressed before it can be approved, but it's it's ready to review. Anyway, it sounds like the consensus is we should wait till June. The Borough Engineer is supportive of that direction. So I'll convey that to the Solicitor and Borough Council President and ask for their support in that for all the reasons that you guys have have given. I'd like to move on to the zoning revisions that we submitted. Some of these are, you know, it's a package of revisions related to the 5A district and then some miscellaneous revisions that were largely precipitated by some actions by the zoning hearing board. I think I forwarded to you the last draft or where that stands right now. Council reviewed these last week, not with, they're not advertised yet. So it was a informal review. And before council votes to advertise, they asked us to address a few, a few small points. I don't have, my notes are correspondence of that up. So if I miss something, someone call me on it. But one of them was that one of the one of the downtown zoning recommendations we made was to create a maximum shop front width, which I believe we, the code that we have, the draft says 55 feet. And council felt that on balance, that was too much and asked us to consider whether there was a narrower shop front that we could recommend to be included in this zoning revision. That's a topic that Jim and I, Jim Cornwell and I looked at in in the context of the other zoning revisions we're talking about tonight. So what I'd like to do is put that topic off until we get to that later discussion. Jim and I can walk through our analysis of that. And then we can see whether we can agree on a better number to give to council on that topic. The second second issue that was flagged was, you may recall, we recommended reducing the maximum facade size of houses from 130% of the average on a block to 115% of the average of a block. Everyone remember that conversation? Some council members felt that was too restrictive and strongly left grounded in evidence for why we would want to reduce that. I did try to explain that that was in our observation of a couple of teardowns and a couple of rehabilitations and thinking that, from what we observed in the teardowns, that that resulted in attempts to build facades that were too large. They asked us to reconsider that. Another point council made was, since we also want to fix the tables in the back of the zoning code so that the maximum facade width reflect each block side rather than the whole block, that that might in and of itself solve the problem that we've observed. And so why should we change the code in one direction if we haven't yet fixed the tables? So that was, I believe, council's take on things. So I guess the first thing I would just ask Maggie, I know Maggie and Jim have spent some time looking at this, the tables that is in the back. And I'm wondering how close are we to having tables that actually break down average facades by block side, not just block?
Sure, so I was looking at that and breaking it down. And Jim had gone ahead and identified which side of the block everything is on based on evens and odds numbers for the housing numbers. And I found a couple of discrepancies. Some of the the housing numbers didn't have data next to them. And when I was looking at what was included already in table 14, the average for the total number of houses on the block matches up. If I take out those numbers that have zero next to them, if you look at the chart, you'll see that some of them had zero for the facade measurement, but was listed as an address. So I haven't quite figured out why we have some of those data figures in there as to why they're missing facade measurements. But they, it only makes sense when you exclude them, obviously, because otherwise it skews the numbers. So there's a couple of things that I still need to kind of tinker around with and figure out. In terms of just taking the numbers though and coming up with the average, that's easy to do. I've just about finished that portion of of the project. But like I said, I came across a number of these inconsistencies where we're missing some of these numbers and I have to go back and figure out why. So before the office shut down, I did try to grab the hard copies that I think may provide some answers to that. So there's there's just a couple of questions that I would want to figure out. And also, we do have a couple of block sides where we have the issue of only two houses listed. And one is, I don't know, 360 square feet and one is 125 square feet. So we have these kind of crazy differences where when you only average between two, you come up with a number that might not really be what you want. So that might that might warrant a closer look as well. So the short answer is yes, we can come up with numbers. The more detailed answer is if we want this to be as accurate as possible, we're going to have to take some time and go through with a finer tooth comb and figure out where we're creating these inconsistencies, where our missing data is, and then fill in those gaps.
If collecting additional data and filling in gaps is necessary, I mean, does that mean someone physically has to go out there and take a picture or do some kind of measurement or?
Potentially. So the way that this was done before was that we had photographs of every single building facade in the borough and they're labeled. And the process to measure was just done using SketchUp. But I don't have access to SketchUp remotely. So and I'd I'd have to go back through and find the process to actually do the measurement and just to keep it consistent with how the measurements were done in the first place. So yeah, Jim.
Oh, I just wanted to point out there, I think there's going to be, to need to be some physical checking of this data anyway because there are a few streets that don't break down odd even left, right. You know, some of them go straight through, they're just numbered through. There's at least one dead end I can think of that's numbered sort of clockwise rather than, you know, it's it starts, it goes one, two, three, four, five, six, all the way around. Also, I noticed there are a few streets from the chart that are just completely missing altogether.
Right, we talked about those last time. And I went through. And I was down here. Yeah, I had identified those streets that were missing. And some of them, there's a couple that only have one home. But yeah, so we are missing some information too. So I think.
It doesn't sound to me like we're going to be able to finalize this anytime soon in terms of council wanting to advertise this particular ordinance. So could I ask, Maggie, thank you for these forensics. Could I ask Maggie if if you and Jim Spear might, I mean, Jim can be the boots on the ground, so to speak, if something needs to be looked at, like oddly numbered blocks? Can you guys work together to finalize this? Since it may be harder for you to get to Norberth these days?
I'd be happy to, yeah.
Okay, great.
Leaves us with then, since I think we have to report back to council while we are deeply in the process of, you know, trying to fix that table. That's not going to happen in time for them to advertise this, yes, Jim?
Can I suggest that we don't actually need this table? It is, it's not referred to in the ordinance. And as long as we delete the existing table, then for the time being, the onus will be on applicants to do their own measurements, which I think, which I would suggest is preferable to having an erroneous table in the rear that that misleads people into averaging both sides of the block.
Warren rejected that idea?
Why is that?
Because we thought it was it was A, too onerous on applicant who's simply trying to build a house. And B, I mean, we did, we discussed this, I really don't want to revisit it.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying for the time being, delete it now, continue to work on the chart and supply it when we have it available.
I I think that opens up a whole other conversation with council that doesn't, I'm not sure it helps.
Okay.
I was going to ask is, would you all be comfortable standing with 130 or reducing it to 115 perhaps? I think if we want to stand with the number we came up with, we have to, all of us, talk to members of council and explain why we came up with that. Do a little bit of, you know, informing people of how we came at that. Otherwise, I think the way to get this, just to get this passed is to reduce the number somewhat as a compromise just so that those folks who are concerned about it will feel better about voting for it. So I think, I don't want to not have a table in there because then that opens other questions that council might have. And I don't want to introduce new questions at this point. So how do you, who would, does anyone support reducing the number just so we can?
Well, I mean, the number doesn't really make any sense if we don't have a table with numbers.
And I'm not.
So.
The table, the table is only supposed to supply the average. So regardless of whether we want to keep, stay with 30 or go to 15 or another number, the table should stay the same because it's only supplying the average, the block averages.
And I'm not sure it is onerous because if you go to the Montgomery County Property Records, every single house on that block has a drawing. It would take anyone 15 minutes to see what the lengths of the facades are. Well, not the area, no.
You mean, you mean, Heidi, that it's not onerous for for an applicant?
Right, but I take that back because we're talking about area. It's not just.
And the Borough would have to check it. So that means the Borough Engineer, zoning officer would have to check that, make sure it's correct, because it's not a published standard.
That's another subject, I guess.
Right. I think we discussed this back and forth and we decided not to do away with the table. And I think, I don't want to reopen every question we've discussed. So the question is, 115, some council members have balked at that.
Well, I mean, then maybe, maybe we should agree to increase it. Maybe there's a compromise number, but I, you know, the whole point of our discussion, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, I wonder if I'm just putting, I just want to have thoughts on it.
No, I mean, I think that the whole reason this came up is because we got concerned that build outs were allowed to be larger and that, you know, made it difficult for for keeping the existing fabric.
Right.
Indeed, they do. And just just take a walk down Dudley Avenue and and you'll see why a outsized facade is injurious to the equanimity on the street.
Right.
So one thing we could do, and any one of us could volunteer to do this, is to make a graphic that illustrates this point. I understand that council would like something tangible to base a, to base a decision on. And we could provide a a hypothetical graphic that would illustrate the issue comparing a row of like sized facades with a house that's, a house front that's 115% of its neighbors and then one that's 130% of its neighbors. And I think the, I think the essence of the problem would would reveal itself pretty well.
So you're.
I will volunteer to make that graphic.
So you would recommend we stick with our recommendation to reduce it to 115, but create a graphic that would help council see.
Yeah, I understand the skepticism on the part of, on the part of Borough Council members. And I'm happy to try to put that to rest.
Okay, has anyone, had any reactions to that suggestion?
I have sort of a lengthy idea, but I mean, not an idea, but I have observations. Do you want to get through this first? Or do you want me to?
Is it about this topic?
Yes. So the other day, I asked Maggie for the raw data so I could run my own, I wrote a little computer program to run a scenarios on every block and to produce what the maximum at 30% would be and the maximum at 15% would be and compare that and see how they, how they compared on each block. And I discovered something I was, that I had been suspecting was that using any kind of percentage, we want, run into a problem whereby a block was previously homogeneous, where, you know, you can picture a block like Dudley that Jim was just referring to, where all the previous facade sizes were all fairly similar. Even 15% is too much. Whereas on a block that's very diverse, that it might have a very small house and a very large house, then 30% is not enough because we're talking about, we're talking about a range centered around the average. And on a block, on a typical block, those houses may well occur beyond the average, either up or down. So I was wondering whether something like the standard deviation would be better in place of percentage, which encompasses, standard deviation is a statistical model that that compresses everything into a bell shape. And you're able to, you're able to account for about 68% of a sample size. And if not using standard deviation, I was, I was curious how that would stack up to either a 30% or a 15%. So I might suggest that this topic bear further study.
Like all topics.
The, I understand.
I guess, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm thinking now about my own block where on the, on the half of a block nearest to Windsor, the houses are significantly larger than than the houses on the half of a block towards Woodbine. And and I can see where using the average of all these houses is probably going to get something that would work on the lower half of the block and not work on the upper half. Is is it more a matter of of thinking about the more adjacent properties? I don't know if it's just the the two immediately adjacent or so, or the four immediately adjacent. But I can see where we're relying on on the the conditions over the entire block can really skew things.
So Dave, the the blocks will be broken up. So currently, they're broken up based on the the block number. So the 100 block and the 200 block and the 300 block are all broken out. And then the idea is that we're going to then further refine that by saying the north side of the 100 block and the south side of the 100 block. So in that sense, we're going to try to get as, as, you know, micro grained as we can. But are you, are you thinking about like on the same block, like on the 100 block? You even have that variation in there?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Within even the 200 block of Forest on the one side, there's enormous variation between the two halves of the block.
So keep in mind as well, the average size for the frontage, for the facade really only applies to the 3A, 3B and 3C districts.
Okay.
I don't know if that changes.
Well, that, that, those are the residential districts, right? Those are.
Right. Is it, I'm sorry, I might be thinking, I'm sorry. I was also looking at setbacks earlier and I'm thinking setbacks. Please disregard. Is it, I'm sorry, I might be thinking, I'm sorry, I was also looking at setbacks earlier and I'm thinking setbacks. Please disregard.
Problem with thinking about senior deviations is you usually need more of a data sized pool than you.
Yeah, no, I, I noticed that too. When I, when these numbers came out, I, you know, I looked at them and I thought, at first thought, maybe I'll propose that we just use the standard deviation as a, as a, as a standard. But they didn't come out all that great. But I, I think they're valuable as a basis for comparison for 30% versus 15%. Because they show, oh, like I said before, like, you know, on a homogeneous block, allowing any increase might, uh, you know, might ruin that block. But on a diverse block, asking, asking frontages to compress further and further toward the average is also kind of silly. Because over time, you know, all the houses will just, um, you know, they'll revert to a, a, a mean.
Over time, but.
Over.
Yeah. Over like.
A long time.
Yeah, a long time.
And I think ruins is a word, quite honestly. I mean, I know the house on Dudley is big, but I don't, I mean, I live across the street from it. I don't think it ruined the block. It's just different.
It's not ruined. Yeah, it's just, it's different.
I.
I think, I think for me, it gets to the heart of, you know, what is, what is form based zoning mean? And how fine grained, you know, should it be? And, and I, I'm saying that without knowing really what the answer is. I mean, part of me says, you know, that it, you know, it could be as fine grained as the, the immediately adjacent houses. Uh, but that's probably overly restrictive. But on the other hand, and I walked by that house, you know, the other night too. And, and I'm from like, yeah, I, I, I think it goes, for me personally, it goes beyond, well, it's just different. We got to get used to it. I, I think it really flies in the face of what we're trying to do with form based zoning.
If I could put it one more way, and then I'll get off this topic. Which is that the lower we make that percentage, like if we bring it down to 15%, the lower we make that percentage, the more out of compliance. These houses, the existing houses will be because you could very well have situations where many, many of the houses on the block are too big. According to what can be rebuilt there, if, if they all have to be rebuilt at plus 15% of the average. Whereas standard deviation encompasses by design, it encompasses most of the houses. But plus 15% doesn't necessarily, doesn't necessarily encompass most of the houses. You know, if you had, if you had five houses that were, I don't know, 500 and 500, and five houses that were 200. You know, then your, your average is 350 and you can only build 15% bigger than 350. And all your 500 houses are out of compliance. You know what I mean? You know? On a diverse block, your larger houses are, just become impossible.
Well, Jim, on the other hand, the purpose of, of relating to the average is to encourage new construction to make nice with its neighbors. That's all it's trying to do. It's not saying it has to be in a certain style. It's not saying anything like that, that many people would consider over the top and onerous. It's just trying to establish some limits beyond which, uh, good manners. To, to anthropomorphize it a little bit, maybe too much, uh, good manners dictates restraint. That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a little restraint here. So in the case in point that we referred to, there was an attempt to build something that was way out of scale with the other houses on the block. And everyone knows the story about how the roof shape got, got modified in order to just sneak in under the, under the. The, the limits that the code currently allows. And then apparently it does sneak in, but the house is too big. I don't think anybody's going to argue that the house isn't too big for that block. It would be okay on another block, it's just not that block. So it's a, it's a question of civility. All these things boil down to civility.
I mean, Nick, I mean, you, you wonder if it couldn't be written in such a way that's more like a preservation ordinance that talks more about. I mean, in the, in the vein of form zoning, is there some language that says, you know, if you see a consistent row of houses on a block. We want to try to fit in with that row. And I mean, do we need a HARB? Do we need to be allowed to have a preservation ordinance? I mean, we, we've talked about it before, like, are we, are we saying that there are only certain properties in the borough that are worth preserving? I, I don't think so. I think the whole borough is worth preserving. And there aren't specific properties that you can really say, oh, that one's special and then the one next door isn't. It, to me, it's, 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 and it's a bit subjective and that's the problem with it. I mean, how do you write it so it's not subjective without having a HARB to, that's allowed to look at a potential tear down? And why does a developer or a property owner want to tear it down in the first place? I mean, where can we go with that? We haven't, you know, that's, that's a subject that we haven't even, haven't had on the agenda. But, you know, the whole thing of developing a historic architecture review board is, is hot, the topic that we need to get on, online with.
Well, just on that matter, Maggie is tasked to work on that. The council's said that is the third priority after downtown work and Saldau revision. So that's, that's what that is. Folks, I don't want to make the perfect enemy of the good. We really have a simple choice tonight. If you, if you would like to, uh, you know, contemplate the best way to write this code in the future, we can have at it. But tonight, the choice is simply, uh, do we stick with 130% and not recommend that change? Excuse me. Or do we stick with the change we recommended? We're not going to come up with a new solution tonight. That's really it. And if we want to recommend 115, we have to do it in our case making with council. If you'd like to figure out a better way to write this section, we can leave it at 130 and figure out a better, right way to write the section later. Uh, but tonight I think that's the choice. So I'm going to call the question because I don't think we're going to get much further with it. The, the question is really, if we're going to allow houses to increase in size by 30% over the average of the block. Uh, we have recommended 115, council has pushed back. So would you like to stay at 115 and try to do better case making? Or would you simply like to leave it at 130 and move on to a better solution in the future? That's really the choice. So I'm going to ask for a vote on that. Who, who would be in support of sticking with the recommendation we made of 115%? And trying to do some better case making in the council, particularly through a graphic that Jim might do to demonstrate the differences? Who's in favor of taking that course of action? Heidi's in favor. I can't see everybody, so.
Wait, what's the question? Would it be 15 or 30?
Who's in favor of keeping our recommendation of 115% and trying to do some better case making with council? Particularly in regard to Jim Cornwell making a drawing.
Could I make one more statement on this along with my vote?
Of course.
Which is, I really believe that the biggest bang for the buck on this fix is the, the sooner we can get an updated chart or eliminate that chart. I think, I think that's going to be our biggest. I mean, everything beyond that is, is sort of icing, you know? So I could take or leave 15 or 30%. I, I really, you know, that's almost beside the point. Once we eliminate this chart, or I'm sorry, or, you know, update the chart, I think we'll be most of the way there toward what we want. And then the number is kind of, it's kind of immaterial unless we examine it more closely.
Well, we're definitely working on the chart. So how do you vote? Do you want to stick with 115, our recommendation, or stick with the existing code 130? Need a second, we can ask others. Dave Brower, how do you vote? Dave, did you disappear? He's still there.
No, I'm sorry. I was, I was adding you, 115.
So mute.
Yeah, I was swearing through the whole thing. I didn't want you to hear it. Now I'm back.
Jim Cornwell, how do you vote?
115.
That's Heidi. Uh, Jim Cornwell?
115.
115. Jim Spear, how do you vote?
I'm, I'm going to say, I'm going to say 130. I know I've lost, I know I've lost, but you know.
I'll vote for 115 also.
Okay.
But I, we are continuing to work on the table. When we get the table, that might open up new opportunities. So we will stick with that and try and do some better case making with council. I think we have oral arguments here and I think we'll have some drawings that will support that. The next item that council asked us to consider was in the, in the design requirements. We've recommended for parking structures in the 5B district, which is Montgomery Avenue. There's a request that we consider stronger landscaping standards than simply what is in the subdivision and land development ordinance. Or in the land, in the, in the shade tree ordinance now, which is what we recommended simply. That buffering needs to be in place. The council wondered if there could be a stronger buffering requirement. If the property of Bots, residential properties. So the garage faces residential, adjacent residential properties, can there be stronger buffering? So the question is, it's two part questions. One is, do you support trying to have a stronger buffering, which council requested? And the second part is, where do we find that stronger standard that we can effectively state in the zoning code? So I guess the first, let's tackle the first one is, does everyone, would everyone agree that we should try to find a stronger buffering standard? If a, if a parking structure, the back of a parking structure faces a residential neighborhood?
Oh, yes. So we don't have anything right now?
What we wrote in the code is that they should follow the buffering requirements that are outlined in the, in the shade tree ordinance. Which I don't think are probably very strong. The reason we wrote that is because we're assuming once we get the Saldau updated, those will be improved. And so we can just, like, the council is wondering if there's a stronger standard that we can come up with.
Where, where would this occur? Where can a parking structure face a residential neighborhood? I'm having trouble picturing where in the borough that might even happen.
On the Julian Krensky tennis courts, if someone wanted to build something there, on the Green Drop. Someone wanted something there on the Dairy Queen slash Narbor.
Okay, so this is all Montgomery Ave we're talking about?
That'd be, yeah.
Okay.
That whole block.
At Albrecht's too, right?
Well, that's, no, because that's already, first of all, they're not building a garage and.
Well, no, but that's an example of a parking structure that's near a residential neighborhood.
It's not a parking structure.
Well, the overhang, no, okay, that doesn't count.
No, no, that's not a parking, we're talking about like a parking.
Like a deck.
But basically any large property on Montgomery Avenue, could be those blocks named across from the Acme. Any of those blocks that where you get a large enough, where you can get a head of steam and do a big project. So that's conceivably where. I mean, I, I think the chance of something happening in the near future is infinitesimal, but that was the question council asked. So first, I guess, is everyone, does anyone disagree that we should try and find a stronger standard?
Does anyone disagree?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all in agreement.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Um, Maggie, is there anything that you know of that we could plug in quickly as a, as a buffering standard for a parking structure next to a residential neighborhood?
Yeah, absolutely. There's definitely lots of examples that we can point to.
Okay.
And this is for the, this is for the zoning code, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So because we already have the existing standard in the zoning code that regulates specifically for parking garages, structured parking. Then we can add pretty much anything because there's a logical nexus between protecting the public health, safety and welfare. To buffer between a parking structure and an adjacent residential property. So we can essentially, within reason, put in whatever buffer width you want. And then whatever kind of buffering you want to see. So it could be a combination of structures like a fence with landscaping, just landscaping or just fence. Um, or the applicant could choose between either of those options. So essentially, any of our buffering standards that you would want to incorporate. Because it's, it's logically tied to the USHAD protection and separation of uses between a parking use and a residential use. We can absolutely add in more strict buffer standards for that purpose.
Okay. You think there's language that you can find and suggest from somewhere else?
Yes. What are you interested in seeing as a buffer?
Walk us through some choice points so at least we can give you some guidance.
Sure. So the three that I mentioned were either doing landscaping by itself. And usually when you talk about wanting a stronger buffer standard with landscaping, it ends up being a mix of high, low vegetation. And some evergreens for year round protection. So typically you might see like a solid line of evergreen trees planted eight feet on center or 10 feet on center. And sometimes you'll have the double row of evergreen trees. So then they'll be planted one in front of the other and again with a high, low. Or it could be a mix of evergreen and deciduous with low lying shrubs to fill in the gaps there. So we have different levels. The, the historic way of doing it is through a screening, softening or filtering buffer. And the screening buffer is going to be your most intense landscape buffer, which typically does have the double row of evergreen trees. Plus the deciduous trees, plus the, the shrubs. You'll typically need at least 12 to 20 feet for that kind of a buffer. Uh, if you're going to put that much landscaping in, you could also reduce it down so that you have just one row of evergreen trees. Just kind of a continuous row of evergreens. Another option is to do a fence of some kind, although in this case fences can only really go up to six feet. And I think you're going to want something a little bit taller and a little bit fluffier to kind of provide that protection and that visual barrier. And then the third option would be to do a combination of fencing and vegetation. So this way you won't have to provide any low lying shrubs, but you may want to provide some taller evergreen trees. Um, and then the fencing could provide both a visual as well as a physical barrier. If you're concerned about having access between the properties for, for safety reasons or, or otherwise. Uh, so those are typically the three options that you have. And then, once you figure out what kind of landscaping or physical barrier you'd want, then we can determine what the buffer width should be. Although I believe it's.
Sorry. Does anybody know what the rear yard setbacks are?
I was going to say, I believe the rear yard setbacks are 25 feet, but let me just.
5B zone?
In the 5B. The rear is 25 feet.
Okay. So again, conceivably, any of the buffers you described could fit into the rear yard setback we have already.
Yes.
So I would, I'd like to make a suggestion because I would really like to move on to the real meat of the meeting. And I would ask Maggie to make a recommendation of text that would provide for a vegetative buffer with evergreens, deciduous trees and low and shrubbery. Uh, that could, that could be provided within that, that rear setback.
Sounds right to me.
And I, and I think there's probably language about this already, but we should also include some sort of provision that no lighting from the garage can bleed into residential areas. If you guys want to see some amazing lighting, go walk along that path behind Maybrook. They have some fantastic pedestrian lighting that lights the sidewalk, but does hardly bleeds. It's pretty good. Anyway, can any, does any, can, does anyone want to comment on my recommendation there?
I think they sound good. I did review some of those comments from council about buffering from residential neighborhoods. And I, I had, at the time I had thought that their concern was that we were providing, we were providing standards for buffering from street views. um, but not from, uh, residential neighborhoods that might, uh, back up onto structured parking. And I thought, I thought, I had thought it was about walling it off from residential views rather than vegetative buffering. You know, the prospect of, of leaving, uh, structured parking open toward residential neighborhoods. Did I misread the concern?
Well, I mean, I don't know, we, different people could hear differently. So are you suggesting, I mean, I want to drive to a recommendation here. Are you suggesting something different then that we should recommend?
Oh, I mean, I thought the, the fix was gonna be just as, as simple as, uh, requiring, uh, uh, you know, screening from residential, you know, from the residential end, the same way we require screening from the street.
You mean by like aligning it with a building?
Yeah.
Oh. Um, well, notwithstanding whatever they were thinking, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that. I think that's not practical to have a parking garage surrounded on all sides by a building.
A parking garage in a box.
Yeah, it's really not.
One of the things parking garages need inherently is, is ventilation, don't forget. So the more you box them in, the more they're gonna need mechanical ventilation in order to be safe for the people who use them. So I think really the, the thing you want to do is not see the parking garages and let the breeze blow through them. Provide, to provide fresh air in the garage itself for safety sake.
Any other comments on this? Okay, so first proposal is to ask Maggie to find language that would provide for vegetative buffer, um, including evergreen, deciduous and shrubbery in the back, in the back rear yard setback. Um, there is a, uh, an, uh, additional, uh, suggestion that the backside of a parking garage should also be shrouded by a building. Um, so I guess what I'd like to do is find out where people stand on this, so we can give Maggie instructions so we can get something quickly back to council. Let's take the, the suggestion about wrapping the back of a building of a parking garage with another structure to, to physically screen it.
Or at least a wall, you know. You know, if you, you were talking about taking a walk, uh, along Maybrook, and if you do so, you will walk next to a parking structure that is completely open. You know, it's, it's open, the whole width of the ramps, you know, you see every ramp. Um, but I don't think parking structures need to be that way. I mean, can they be enclosed a little more with some, you know, some, um, some bar windows or something like that?
They have to be fifty percent open. Typically.
But still, they could be, they could be screened with some kind of, I don't, you know, like steel bar.
I know what you're saying, some kind of lattice or something, but, but I'm not sure that's.
The fact is that nothing like that is gonna hide it from being a parking structure. You know, so, you know, don't, you know, you can't delude yourself in thinking that it's gonna camouflage it. You know, the, the only way to really quote, and I'll put it in quotes, hide it would be with vegetation.
Or to soften it, yeah.
Yeah, soften is probably better, because you're never gonna completely hide it.
At least, yeah, at least the evergreen trees are green all year round, and it just makes sense to have that in there. I mean, you can't dictate, even if you were to say some kind of screening or building, it could be really ugly. It could be horrible. It's not something you'd want to look out on if you lived. At least evergreens protect you. So I'll start with that.
Um, so I'm gonna ask, wait on this, and I'm gonna break it into two parts. The first vote I'll ask for is, who would support asking Maggie to quickly search for language about providing a vegetative buffer, uh, on the backside of a parking garage that faces a residential district? The, the buffer to include, um, uh, evergreen, deciduous and shrubbery. And then the second vote will be on to additionally or alternatively, uh, recommend, uh, architectural screening of the backside of a parking garage. So in terms of the buffering, who would be supportive of, of asking, uh, of, of, of making that our recommendation about screening?
Could we, can we vote yes on both?
Yes, you may. Dave? You're against on the landscaping?
Yes, I'm for that.
Jim, how do you vote on the landscaping?
Me? I said yes.
Okay. Jim Cornwell?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and Heidi, how do you vote?
Landscaping.
I vote landscaping. So five votes to support, uh, uh, Maggie, uh, coming up with landscaping buffering language. Maggie, um, we'll need that quickly, something to add into this draft, if that's okay with you?
That's fine.
Really, this is just sort of like inserting some DNA from somewhere else? Okay, so the second, the second recommendation is to require further architectural screening of the backside of a parking garage that faces a residential district. Uh, I, for the sake of argument, would like to leave the definition of that architectural screening till later. We can work that out. Yeah, that it's some aspect of the building design should also screen or mitigate the presence. Jim, is that an accurate reflection of it?
Yeah.
So who's in favor of that? Jim Spear?
Yes.
Okay. Dave Brower?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Heidi Boys, like, did you give a hand signal?
I didn't. I, I'm not sure exactly what, how we would write it, so I'd have to hold off on that.
But that's enough. Dave, Jim Cornwell?
No.
That's the full McCain, Mr. Cornwell. I vote no too, so that's three, one and one. So that will not be a recommendation. Okay, um, am I missing anything from the council meeting? Those were three main issues, I believe. We talked about three issues. Does anyone remember from the notes whether I missed anything?
Um, I don't think so. General appreciation for the body of work and nuance improvement to topics like building height. That was number four.
And was there nothing else in those notes, Heidi?
Uh, no, just that he wants the final tweaks after Tuesday.
Right. Okay.
Yep.
All right, so, um, that in mind, then we will move on, um, to the, um, I don't have less track of. So that's my report. Maggie, can you give us a quick report on the SADO and the Heritage Action Plan?
Sure. Um, before we do, I just wanted to ask, I looked through the ordinance language. Um, this obviously hasn't come before the county for our two forty-seven review yet. I'm assuming that's gonna be happening after John Waco gets these updates?
Right, because it has not been formally advertised yet?
Right, okay. Um, because I did have a couple comments that I noted. Um, I don't know if we want to go through them now, or if you want to wait for, the review letter to come out.
I, I think it's important for us to hear them, but I'm very concerned about the time. Um, are they, if the review, if, when you do that review letter, it's very hard to change the ordinance at that point, so. Are these things we need to consider changing before we have it advertised?
Um, a couple of them are just clarification points and, and editing, uh, questions and clarifications. But, let's see. So I'm just going through my notes just to make sure that there's nothing that's. I mean, some of this is just editing things. Um, and, and for that, maybe Todd, what I can do is just send you, this document that has my comments in it, and you can review them, and, and that should kind of clarify. It's, it's, a lot of them are just kind of editing things.
Okay.
And just clarification of some points, so I am not seeing anything that's going to be substantial.
Okay.
So, so, um, I'll just send you those comments then, and if there's anything that you want to send along to John Waco. Um, but I, I, I don't think there's anything substantial, so.
Can you just copy everyone, please?
Oh, yes, of course. Um.
Thank you.
And, uh, just so you, it's not gonna, the comments are gonna be under my husband's name and not my name, because, um, it's, the, the word is, um, under his licensing, so. Uh, it's from me though. Um, all right. So the SADO, um, so I sent out a memo to you all this afternoon, um, updating you on where we are with the SADO. So right before the, uh, lockdown went into effect, I met with, um, Sean Metrick and Eric Johnson and Kevin Walsh. Um, so that would be the borough manager, the borough engineer and the borough zoning officer, and we chatted about the, uh, subdivision and land development ordinance and taking a look at some of the major areas of concern that we had with our various perspectives and, uh, discussing next steps for how we wanted to proceed with it. From that meeting, there was just a couple of things that we had kind of come across. We all decided, um, all right, not decided, but we all agreed that the, uh, SADO refers very specifically to the creation of new lots and new streets, um, but does very little to kind of discuss, um, the regulations that we would want to see for a borough that's more built out. Uh, so the, the SADO seemed like it maybe had been adopted from another community that was growing. But Narberth is, is at this point fully built out, and we are not anticipating additional new roadways or streets to the extent that the SADO says. So there's a lot of language in there that we're considering uh, reducing in scope, um, to account for the development patterns that we actually experience in the borough. Um, and then there's just some right sizing of the ordinance requirements, uh, specifically relating to things like uh, parking standards and drive-by all standards. So Eric, uh, was in agreement that some of those can be modified, and that will also bring it into performance with some of the provisions in the zoning code to make those more, uh, in agreement. We also discussed the, excuse me, the, um, plan submission requirements. Um, and so, again, a, a lot of this is kind of outdated in that it asks for, you know, seventeen full-size plans be submitted. Since we're all moving into more digital submission process, we're just gonna be right sizing some of those requirements in terms of um, the scale and quantity of, of paper copies and things like that. Um, so those are all just, generally speaking, some housekeeping issues to, to clean up with the SADO, so nothing is super um, different than, than what already exists. The big issue, um, is just going through and, uh, comparing the borough SADO with the county's model SADO. And, uh, we do have a number of other municipalities in the county who have recently gone through and updated their SADOs as well. And so what I'm doing is kind of going line by line to make sure that, uh, we have all of the proper sections in the Narberth SADO that we want to have in there, and that it includes the regulatory guidelines that are most appropriate for the borough. So, um, at this point, I am still kind of going through that checklist, um, so it's not yet complete, but I, um, so at this point, I don't have an update or, or a list of things that I feel need to be brought to the planning commission's attention. Um, like I said, most of this is kind of housekeeping for right now, but I hope to, within the next few weeks, wrap that up and have, um, a more robust discussion with the planning commission at a future planning commission meeting, um, on all of those various topics, and that is something that I would want to prepare in advance to have you all, uh, have a chance to look through. And then, if there's anything that's, that warrants more of a discussion, we can talk about that uh, during the meeting to decide just the direction that you would want to go for either inclusion or not, and then just standards. Uh, so if the standard doesn't exist, but we want to include it, I'll watch your feedback on that before we make any final decis- decisions. Um, so that's kind of where I am with that. The one big thing that came out of the SADO meeting with the staff last month was actually a zoning matter. So as we were going through the SADO, we uncovered a zoning matter that I feel needs to be brought to your attention, and actually, because we have the ordinance going in, um, for advertisement, this might be a good opportunity to address that. So let me just pull that one up real fast. So that has to do with, uh, let's see. Um, so the issue that we, um, discussed was during, was actually looking at the setbacks. Uh, so under table thirteen, um, we have our setbacks, front yard setbacks, and those describe um, the front yard setbacks by block. So this actually is going to be, uh, the median setback. Uh, so when I mentioned earlier that this applies to the three A, three B and three C zoning districts, it was this table for the setbacks, not the facade area, so I apologize if that was confusing. But this is the median setback by block. Um, and under, uh, table four, site planning, for those three zoning districts, it refers to these setbacks. Uh, so any new development would have to meet these median setbacks for the front yard setback. But the way that setback is defined in the zoning code, it's defined as being measured from the lot line, but we determined that the front yard setbacks were actually measured from the curb line. So the issue is, if you're using the numbers from table thirteen to measure your setbacks in one of those three zoning districts, you're going to be measuring it from the lot line instead of the curb line, which will actually give you potentially a much deeper setback than desired. So this is where our definition of how a setback is defined doesn't align with the measurement of how the setbacks were actually measured. So what I'm recommending is that we amend the definition for setbacks, so that it will read, uh, for the three A, three B and three C zoning districts, that front yard setbacks are actually measured by the curb line. And then you can follow the median setbacks in table thirteen with confidence, and that all the remainder of the zoning districts are measured at the lot line unless otherwise specified. So that is the change that I wanted to bring up, and that was discussed with the staff at that meeting on March thirteenth. So that's, I'm just gonna pause there, um, to see if you have any feedback on that.
So I was trying to understand the difference. So the, are you saying that the data in that table, does that measure that data? Is that what you're saying? There's an inconsistency between the measurements and the definition?
Right, so the measurements were taken from the curb line, um, not the lot line. So if you were to actually like overlay the lot lines on an aerial, you're not gonna have the same.
Right.
Um, they're not gonna be at the same location. So your lot line is gonna be at the edge of the ultimate right-of-way. Uh, so essentially, imagine if you have your, your sidewalk, and then the edge of the sidewalk that's closest to the house, that's your lot line. But these measurements are measured from the curb line, which includes the sidewalk. So if you were to measure from the lot line, you're measuring from a point further in, and then your setback will end up being deeper, because you now have, you know, six feet of the grass landscape area and your sidewalk that you're not accounting for.
Okay.
Does that help to clarify?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
When you say lot line, Maggie, do you mean the right-of-way line? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Along the front of the property, there's a right-of-way line. Sometimes the lot line is in the center of the street on some properties in, in the borough.
Right.
And sometimes the right-of-way line is the lot line, and it's, in, in, at my house, it's thirteen feet in from the curb, more or less.
Right.
Give or take.
The definition of lot line is the boundary of the property exclusive of areas in the right-of-way.
So, right, so Jim, some of the lot lines, when you look at the map, they are actually, um, in the middle of the, the roadway. But the way to get around that, because the definition includes exclusion of the right-of-way, you go to your right-of-way table, and then you essentially subtract that out. So if your right-of-way is thirty feet, that That would be fifteen feet from the center line. So then it would be fifteen feet in from that would be considered. Your, your lot line.
Yeah, so using the curb makes perfect sense.
Yeah. So in practice, we measure the lot line from the right of way. But that's not consistent with how we did the measurements, which is from the curb. Sounds right. Why not do this for all districts, Maggie?
Yeah.
Uh, that's a great question. I'm very much, personally, I'm very much in support of using the curb line. Again. Going back to Narborough is a built-out community. We're not anticipating that we're gonna be. Uh, expanding any of the roadways. We're not going to be widening any roadways, so. We can remain fairly confident that the edge of the roadway where the curb is, is going to remain constant. And therefore, it would be a consistent measurement to say. Um, the edge of the curb line. Because that also then impacts the perception of your setbacks. Um, when you're walking on the street, you're not imagining what the legal right of way is. Um, that's a, that's a line that exists on a, a deed record. Um, but from a physical, practical sense, um, you can see. A curb line and you can feel what that distance between the curb line and that building facade looks like and feels like. So. I would be in support of that. We'd have to go through though and make sure. That the setbacks would be adjusted um, to account for any additional width that would. That was accounted for because we were using the lot line as the terminology. So. Um, we would just need to make sure that that would all line up.
You're not, since this is a difference between the measured distance and the definition, you're not. Sure about the measurements in four A, four B, five A and five P is how they were made.
Yeah, so the, the reason why that we're bringing this up is because the table thirteen was a. Is a median uh, measurement. Um, so going back to the. This table was created so that applicants wouldn't have to figure out what the median was on their block again, because that creates a burden on the applicant. And in order to normalize it, we did the measurements first. And then came up with the table for applicants to follow. In the other zoning districts, our setbacks are not based on the median. But they're based on set distances. Um, so the four A district has a set distance. Um, our four B has a set distance, our five A has a range of set distances. Um, and our five B district also has a range of set distances. And those are all measured from the lot line um, as set distances. So if we were to say from the curb line. Then we would need to account for the sidewalk essentially, and if there's any areas where we have. Landscape medians, which we do in some areas of the borough, adds an additional two to four feet potentially. So. The discussion was if we change how we define the. Setbacks for the other zoning districts, we're gonna have to do more measurements. Um, but this is kind of. If, if we feel that the measurements are working for the other zoning districts, this is just a way to ensure that the. The three zoning districts that operate on median setbacks um, are properly accounted for. Or again, we just go back and redo table thirteen. And measure everything from the lot line rather than the curb line. But it was one of those, we already have the measurements, the measurements are determined to be. Um, correct, but they're correct from the curb line. And so it's just that in order to avoid confusion that we wanted to amend the, the definition.
Okay. Any other questions about this? Okay. Um, so I'll just take a vote. I mean, I, I'm pretty, I think I understand it pretty clearly. It feels completely forward to me. Suggesting a slight change in the definition uh, of the setback in the three A, three B and three C zone so that its measurement is consistent with. The way the median setbacks were measured in the first place. Um, and that would be from the curb line, not from the lot line. Um, so I just, it seems to me to be a relatively simple fix. We can ask Maggie to send us. Or she has already really, we can slide that into the text we give to Mr. Walco and then um. Take it from there. So um, can I have a motion to um. Recommend that change to the zoning code?
So moved.
In cornwell moves. Is there a second to recommend that change to the zoning code?
Second.
And Heidi, any further discussion?
Uh, are there any um, a, any domino effects? I mean, I, I can't think of any, but. Is this gonna change? Is, is something else in the zoning code gonna have to get moved as a result of this?
No, there shouldn't have to be any other change. Um, again, this is. A pretty specific way that setbacks are measured. So only the three A, three B, three C zoning districts. Have front setback measurements as the median of houses on the block. And all of those measurements again were already created. So it's, it's really specific to those districts. And it's specific to front yard setbacks. Because I believe in the. Yeah, so in the definition amendment that I included in the memo I sent you earlier today, it does specify that it is. Front yard setbacks shall be from the curb line. So it doesn't impact how rear or side yard setbacks would be measured. Um, and it is specific to just those three districts, and those three districts are the only ones. That are subject to the median setback table. So those measurements in the table only apply. Um, for that measurement for those districts. So there shouldn't be a domino effect. There shouldn't be any, anything else that gets impacted by this.
Okay, any other questions? We'll ask for a vote. Um. Mister Spear, how do you vote?
That sounds good to me, of, or yes.
Dave, how do you vote?
I, yes.
Jim Cornwell, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Dennis Montana, how do you vote?
I.
Thank you, Alfred. Okay, Maggie, so. Um, let me know if the text you sent already or if some additional text needs to be included in our. Notes to uh, the, the.
Sure, I, I wrote the memo so that the text should be able to just slide right into the zoning amendment, but I will verify and let you know if there's anything additional.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
About the um, hearing ejection plan you'd like to report?
Uh, yeah, so um. Just to say, uh, Todd mentioned that the Heritage Action Report is kind of. Um, on the list of things to do after the SADO. Uh, currently the SADO, based on the um. The scope of work that we had talked about at our February meeting um, is slated to go through November. Uh, so that's not to say that we can't start the Heritage Action Plan earlier than that. Um, I haven't done too much. Uh, on this just yet, but um, there is a game plan in place for how we're going to accomplish that. So. Uh, that we have a whole bunch of documents that we're kind of building off of to create the historic. District and a lot of that is based off of the Heritage Action Plan. Um, and the. Recommendation from that was to create a historic district ordinance. Adopted under the authority of the Historic District Act. Um, as a result of that, we would need some governing body um, like a HARB. To uh, maintain the program. And we would have standards set into place. We would have to create a district boundary. And then we would have to create what resources are being managed through this. So that's one of the things that we've kind of talked about in a roundabout way for a, a few months now. So my game plan is to take the, the draft kind of ordinance. Um, so this is something that Corey Kegarice and his team have, have started to create. And so we have some base language that we can start working with. Um, but the big, the big question is to figure out what. Um, what areas should be covered? Uh, so like physical boundaries. Should be covered and then what types of decisions should be managed? Um, so what kind of resources should be managed and how? Uh, there are options under the Historic District Act to build off of what you have. So my initial recommendation. Is to do some kind of broader district for the borough. Um, you can have multiple districts. Uh, so there are some specific areas like Narbrook Park that we might want to consider as a separate district. Than other areas of the borough. Um, and then one of the things that have come up in past discussions is the desire to focus. A little bit more narrowly on having the review scope be limited to demolitions and major building alterations. So we would need to come up with definitions for what we mean by a demolition. How much of a building is demolished versus an alteration? How much of an alteration is. Considered a major versus a minor that would fall under the purview of the review. Um. And so what I want to do is, because it's always easier to respond to something. When it's in writing, what I'd like to do is flesh this out a little bit more and come back to you with a more solid scope of. These are the district boundaries I'm recommending. This is the ordinance language I'm recommending. These are the review criteria that I'm recommending. And then we can take a look at it to say, this covers what we want, or this doesn't cover what we want, or. We want to change the boundaries here or whatever the case may be. So. Um. Uh, my office is also having an additional conversation with Corey. Um, so I will be able to. Kind of present this to him as well, um, to get his feedback as, as I'm developing it. So. Over the next couple of weeks, I would imagine I can come up with a framework um, that outlines this a little bit better. Um, so that we have something more concrete to, to read and respond to. So that is my plan for that.
Okay, any comments or questions? Um, also Maggie is um, to incidentally receive public comment on this. Um, the public comment has been to make sure that downtown is a priority. When we shape the form, so.
Yes.
As you are um, thinking about that, that's important. That would be one of the topics that we talk about a little later when we talk about our downtown zoning review. So. Just bring that to the table because that's what the public has been saying to us, at least those who have commented to us about this.
Great.
Okay. All right, anything else, Maggie?
Um. No, that's all I had. Um, just some general uh, kind of county planning things. We are. Uh, moving forward with having our um, planning commission board meetings. Uh, so if you are ever interested in seeing one of those, most uh, public choose not to attend. Um, but those are gonna be running digital. Um, and just a quick update as well, we had our uh, Montgomery County Small Business Grant Program. Um, the winners of that was just announced. So you can go onto the Commerce Department's website to see. Um, the winners of that and there have been talks of potentially uh, doing another round. So we'll be reaching out to all the Commerce Department of the county to announce that. Um, but we are. Very aware of how the closures have affected our local businesses. So we're doing what we can to reach out to communities and understand kind of where the needs are. Um, so it's just something I just want to make everyone aware of uh, is, has been happening, but it was a, a million dollar grant program. And I believe um, we, we uh, issued grants to. I believe we did almost one business in every municipality. So um, all of that is posted on the county's website. If you'd like to check it out.
Right, thank you. Okay, thanks for that report. Okay, let's move on then to the main topic and um. We've gone far into our time, but let's see how far we can get, um, which is the five A zoning review. So first let me thank you all for the vigor with which you've. Your assignments. Um, we did a little bit of um, small group thinking about these different topics and. And I was, it was fun to watch the ideas um, chattering over the past few weeks. Um. The topics we discussed that we, that we had little teams working on were ground floor frontages, uh, station circle, retail and office viability. Building heights uh, and parking. Um. I don't really. Know where to start. Would anyone like to volunteer to begin and talk about one of the topics?
Flip a coin.
Flip a coin? Well, um. It's hard because two of the coins are mine, you know? Um, maybe one we could put aside easily. Who worked on building heights? Work on that topic?
Yeah, Jim and I, Tim Spear.
Did you come to any um, observations concluded? I mean, what we're looking for tonight is sort of a quick. Observe, sense of your observations and whether or not you're coming to. Any kind of uh, recommendations that we can then kind of take further in our next meeting into actual language of some sort for council. So what was, where, where did you guys land on this uh, topic?
Well, I think the most important thing to us, and it seems like you've addressed it in the ordinance, so I didn't realize that that was the case regarding where do you take the height from? On a slope site. And that, that was pretty critical. Um, and the, you know, of course, the other topic was whether or not we'd mess with the two. Floor uh, revision that was already um, approved by council. I think the only other question that we had was um, whether there ought to also be a height limit. Change with two floors. I mean, why keep two floors at thirty-six feet?
We actually have recommended that already.
Okay, so that, see, those are, I didn't know that. Is that in this ordinance also?
That's in the draft language, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We have a maximum, ultimate, a height of thirty-two, but a average height of twenty-six.
Okay.
That takes into account slope sites. We also. Um, and, and I, it may actually be redundant, but we, we said that um, any part of the building that. protrudes above the ground counts, even if it's basement.
Okay.
That's pretty much that for the five A district, that's what we came up with.
Okay.
Um. All right, so pretty much you're, I guess what you're saying is, uh, so did you guys talk at all about, about the uh. The issue that a certain number of buildings automatically became non-conforming when the height limits were decreased?
We did a little, we did a little bit. Uh. I don't know.
Maggie, how many buildings in situation? You, you said you had done an analysis of that?
Yeah, let me pull up that. Um. I forget how many it was offhand. About fifteen or sixteen buildings. Um, are currently above two stories.
Do you know how many of those are at corner lots by any chance?
Yeah, so the corner. At Windsor and Essex Avenue. Um, and then the set of buildings facing Haverford Avenue. At the corner with North Narborough Avenue are also uh, three stories. And. I know they're not built yet, but the new buildings um, at Rickland's and Caden's sites are three stories. So when those go in, those will also be three stories, which will increase the number. And corner.
Do we count the uh, the meta technical building as a, a corner or not? The one that's on Station Circle?
Um. Yes, I'm sorry, it is. Um. Uh, well, it, I don't know if I would call it a corner. Um, but that one is three stories.
Yeah.
What are you thinking, Jim?
Oh. Well, I mean, I'd mentioned it at the last meeting and Heidi and I touched on it briefly. The, the idea that corners bear more height. Um, and that may reduce the overall non-conformities downtown. But I'm not sure it really works out that way. I mean, Heidi pointed out that there are a lot of mid-block buildings that are three stories.
Right.
Um, and Maggie just confirmed that.
And also. And also it would make at risk some of the buildings on South Side of Haverford. The corner, like the Revivals Building.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think that's why I was tempted to leave it alone. Um. At least for now.
That's pretty much where we landed. It's, it's to stick with the two floor and just clarify the, the footage for two floors. As we already have done.
Yeah.
Maggie, do you see this as an egregious problem? From a planning, planning practice point of view?
Sure, so it's very unusual to. Limit your. Um, building heights in your core downtown. building heights in your core downtown. So in terms of sticking with best planning practices, this is somewhat opposite of what we would recommend. So best planning practices. And I know this is not a TOD district per se, but it operates as one. It's your core downtown. It's access to a retail or a rail station with bus service as well. So the the limitation of two stories in this district is not in support of what we would consider best planning practices for downtown areas. And part of it too is just maintaining a viable tax base for the community. And this is the area where you're going to to get the most opportunity for increasing your tax revenue, you know, through redevelopment. And and generally speaking, you're going to want to have your your core as your as your height.
I was thinking, Maggie, what what about looking at it? I'm sorry, Todd.
I see you more specifically just about the nonconforming aspect of this. I understand the theory of, you know, central place being denser. But more specifically, what's your take on the fact that we've just added thirteen buildings to our inventory of nonconforming buildings?
Right, so that's, yeah, so that's also a consideration. And that's something that I brought up in my review letter when this came in is the creation of nonconforming buildings can be problematic because now all of a sudden, if those buildings need to have any work done on them, they can be really onerous to go through the nonconforming status. Obviously, they're allowed to maintain the their building. But if they were to ever be redeveloped, then we would be losing height. So it is again, just generally speaking, the creation of nonconforming structures through an ordinance that that isn't apparently serving. There's there's nothing that stops you from doing three stories, other than all of the arguments as to why you would want to restrict to three stories for your, you know, your heights and your shadows and your community vision.
It's like for people's ability to get mortgages or financing.
Uh, that's an excellent question. I'm not able to speak authoritatively on this subject as as I'm not a loan expert. But in today's market economy, I did speak with Dave Zellers earlier today from the Commerce Department, asking specifically about Narberth. And I would imagine that there could potentially be. He he did say that that yes, limiting some of your height in in today's market economy, I'm trying to phrase this because I'm not well versed in in finance per se. But the, in order to get loans, in order to be competitive in the development and marketing real estate world, I think it it's challenging, more challenging to. He said, he he pretty much said it, he thinks that it may tamp interest in doing business potentially by by limiting. And I I would imagine that part of it could be that acquiring finance financing for for projects that may not be as commercially viable would be would be more challenging.
I think you're being kind, Maggie. I think no developer is going to touch a two-story redevelopment.
I don't think the numbers are there to to justify it.
Right, it's not, it's, there isn't enough meat on the bone to to attract development investment. And I think that's a problem because these hundred-year-old buildings are don't have a long life ahead of them. And we are going to want to have controlled redevelopment on the south side of Haverford Avenue in order to have building stock there that is that is substantial and robust. Some of these buildings are practically falling down. So I I urge that we are, we have our eyes open for the long-range future of Haverford Avenue as we discuss limiting the redevelopment potential of the street. And I think two stories is a huge mistake.
I disagree, especially on the south side of Haverford.
Okay, well.
I think that's that was the one area that we all, I thought we all agreed we should have.
Not all of us have agreed.
Okay, well.
Can I, um, I have two points. So one is from the economic development angle is instead of looking at what a two-story limitation takes away from the economic development potential, what about looking at properties which are currently one story and could go to two stories and 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 enumerating those as future opportunities? Is I mean, is there enough room for growth with a two-story limit?
I think, I think. No.
Sorry.
I think I think the answer Maggie was saying is the answer is no.
Uh, and then yeah, then the other comment I had was I'm not sure the the fifteen properties you identified as being existing is three-story. I I'm not sure if any of those include the the new one that's going up on Forest and Windsor. But I wanted to point out that the Windsor corridor remains at four stories. And you know, it remains at three stories for mixed use and four stories for apartment buildings, regardless of the two-story limitation downtown. It's a separate ordinance.
Uh, yeah, that's true. So the existing building that's there is three stories, so it's included in the count. But the apartment building that's proposed for that site is, as you say, four stories. And other sites in this district on Windsor Avenue, if redeveloped, could also be potentially three to four stories. So you do have then this this inconsistency where your Windsor Avenue corridor could end up being the tallest portion of your district. And then the height limits would decrease as you head towards Haverford Avenue and the train station.
I'm going to push back a little bit about that. I mean, I don't think it's uncommon when you have a historic downtown for the historic downtown not to be the place where the most intense new development is and to have kind of a ring around it. I mean, I can think of a number of towns, maybe not around here, but where that's the case, where they've taken a block or two and really preserved it right in the middle. The new stuff, the big stuff happens around the edge. So I bet you morphologically, you could find different kinds of patterns. What I'd like to do, because I want to move on, is ask Jim and Heidi to consider a question, which is would a three-story building, would it would it be worth considering allowing three-story buildings through some sort of discretionary process that returns some additional benefits to us? And and not through an as-of-right process? And for that, I would ask you to look at the you know, the report we did last June that looked at the way we could, you know, potentially link taller buildings to more benefits, to see whether or not that might be a an alternate course for us? I mean, I'm not saying I'm supportive of that. I'm just saying that might be an interesting experiment for you guys to think about. Would you be willing to do that for our next conversation?
Sure, I would.
Okay. Because I I think we have differing opinions about this among us, but I think that would be an interesting question to look at. I think there are some people on council who are interested in that question. I mean, I think they moved it to two, but if there's a reset, they can move it back somehow, that might be worth considering. So maybe it's a, it's not just a theoretical question, but what's the right path to occasionally having a taller building? So if you could look at that, at that report we did, I mean, don't redo that work because we did talked about that for several months and then wrote that report. So take a look at that and see if that offers any ideas.
There was one other aspect we talked about that we didn't, we didn't come to feel that it could rise to a recommendation, but the idea that a third story or anything above two stories could get pushed back from view or would be subject to a shadow shadow review or, you know, something like that.
Well, you could add that in to your considerations. We've done that for four-story buildings. So I guess it's a hypothetical question. If there were opportunity, if we wanted to find a path to an occasional opportunity for three-story building, what would be a path that would trade off benefits to us versus a change that some people feel is not allowable? So thank you. So let's move on to another topic. Jim, you want to, Jim and Jim, you want to talk about Station Circle?
Yeah, sure. Take it away.
Well, Station Circle is a is a unique thing in the main line. It's one of the few places in the center of of communities where the potential exists for the the kiss and ride function that is so important at train stations to also be a civic center for the town. We have, when we have events in town, there is a, there is a need for a place to call the center of town. And we haven't really had a center of town for a while. It was the the parking lot at the gas station or the or the 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 exercise gym. And it is, it seems appropriate that we that we think about the redevelopment of Station Circle to to potentially serve the function of a town square. Right now, it's a very inefficient and dangerous parking lot that serves the State Store and the train station. And to a lesser extent, other businesses in that at that end of Haverford Avenue. But I I think we need to think about, I urge the planning commission to think about the the redevelopment of the inefficient circular parking lot that we have there as a town square. So Jim and I have been talking about ways that we can serve multiple functions in that space. One of the functions, and I've done some little diagrams, which I sent around to the to the members of the planning commission. I don't know if these are going to be even be visible, but is this visible if I hold this up or not?
Hold it a little higher than it is.
Now I can't see myself. So this is very well. So suffice it to say that we did some graphics to explore the the geometry of Station Circle with an eye to helping us to think about the functions that it needs to perform for us. And I will sort of read off the ones that came to mind. There needs to be the the ability for safe and easy drop-off for kiss and ride at the train station. It would be a good idea to eliminate the radial parking function, which has proven itself to be awkward and dangerous, which explains why there's there's a such a lot of of rear parking light lenses always on the pavement there because people back into the bollards. We need to provide a proper space for performances that occur in there from time to time. We need to provide access to the State Store, I think, although that is debatable. And I urge people to comment on on the degree to which we need to provide super convenient parking for the State Store. How important is that? Because that is a driver of the design of the Station Circle redevelopment. And it would be very nice to improve access to the crossing to the to the south side of the train station. Big, long-term, major project would require federal funding, of which there is none available foreseeable future, but seems to, it seems to us, please comment, Jim, if I'm not saying this strongly enough, that the time will come when we must provide handicapped accessibility across the train station, across the train tracks. Back in eighteen eighty or whenever it was, correct me if Dennis is just out of off the train here, whatever the date is, when they built the train station and laid the tracks, they made a little tiny, a little tiny rat tunnel to get across of the train tracks, but there was nobody living on either side at that time. So it really didn't make any difference. Have tons of residents who are trying to get through that tunnel all the time, and it's woefully inadequate. And it and it doesn't provide any accessibility. The time will come when SEPTA has got to make its trains accessible, which they're not now. The station isn't accessible in any way. But we should be thinking as we as we think about the long-term redevelopment of Station Circle, we should be thinking about what are we going to have to do to to provide for access to an accessible route across the train tracks? I don't propose that we do that immediately because none of us has the money to do it. We we have a situation with with Station Circle in that it is part of the egress from the from the parking lot behind the Haverford Avenue stores. Potentially under redevelopment in the coming years. But an important, an important aspect of Station Circle is that it needs to be the the exit from that parking lot. So these are all requirements that a redesign of Station Circle needs to accommodate. And I urge other members of the planning commission to respond with their thoughts. Couple of people have about the the sketches that I sent around, which really is very awkward to to hold up to public view here, but you've all got them and can can respond with comments. There are a lot of exciting possibilities for that space. And I think the town ultimately will need a civic space that it can be proud of. Having said that, I await more comments and we will have more to say in the future, Jim and I.
So I'd like to, so thank you, Jim. That was a great statement. You must have prepared it. I heard the papers rustling.
I've been thinking about Station Circle for forty years, Todd.
So two questions for everyone. One is, of the long list of functions that Jim described, do any rise to a higher level of priority or do any rise sink to a lower level? I think Jim was suggesting maybe the parking for the State Store was was not of the same urgency as creating a civic square. And then secondly, council specifically is interested in knowing in the context of two thirty Haverford, what our thoughts are about that space being one of the egress routes for the parking behind or even ingress? And and what what we think the impact of that would be on what the the longer vision for Station Circle would be? So those are two issues, I think, for all of us. I'd love to hear from other people on.
Well, I think I was thinking about this a bit today. And for starters, I don't think it could be the the ingress for that parking area behind the stores because that would necessarily mean that the alley onto Haverford Avenue down the block would be the egress. And I I think that's inherently dangerous situation of of cars pulling out of that tight driveway into traffic. So I think the traffic flow has to remain the way it is. But I think there are other ways to solve the problem. You know, in thinking, you know, beyond a circle and having having an egress route parallel to the, I'll call it the McShay Building, parallel to the McShay Building, going out essentially perpendicular to Haverford Avenue and preserving as much area as possible for the for the town square. And and I think through the use of of bollards, you know, and and consistent paving, you know, going, you know, actually all the way across from the station, all the way across to the to the north curb of Haverford Avenue will start to also define, you know, a real station square area and not just the the square footage now taken by the circle. You know, so I think there, you know, I think we we are. You know, so I think there, yeah, yeah, I think we, we are um probably locked in to the circulation being what it is in terms of getting out of that rear parking area. But, you know, I think with some creative, you know, uh, you know, thought process going into it, you know, we can make it a lot more than, than what it is now. I also think that the um that those parking spaces immediately in front of the State Store are, are convenient at all, but there's, there's, there's parking on both sides of Haverford Avenue. There's parking, you know, uh on Forest Avenue. Uh, you know, I think if there was a drop off area, I was thinking about this too. If there was a drop off space, spaces um parallel to Haverford, I just pull in spaces that those could perhaps also be metered parking uh for most of the week, but left for a drop off and, and uh uh pickup spaces kind of at the prime time hours uh for people who come to, to get somebody from the train. So I guess what I'm saying in not a very eloquent way is, I don't think you need those parking spaces on the circle. And I think the greater good is served, you know, with the parking we have. I think there are other solutions when we think about the Cook site that could have a net increase to parking for the downtown. And I think we would be well served in thinking about getting rid of those Station Circle spaces. Sorry for the long-winded and not very elegant way of saying it, but that's it.
Can I say um with regard to the egress issue, I would, I think that you know, that egress exists because there is a borough lot back there that needs egress. But if that gets redeveloped in some way, we don't really owe egress to the developer. And we may, you know, I, I can think of, you know, maybe, maybe the exit is onto Narberth Ave or something like that. Um, eh, if we have the opportunity to redevelop Station Circle, I would, it would be a great idea if they could be all pedestrian and not have any traffic flow through there at all. Like when we were viewing those sample student presentations, we saw a dozen or more of those. And that was a real bear for them to get around, the idea that you still needed to vent traffic through what they were trying to turn into a public park area. Um, uh, so I, I think we gotta consider that, that um that traffic flow could go any number of other ways other than through Station Circle.
Here's that, here's that idea. I don't know if this is.
Yeah.
Well, I'll try to peek past it so I can talk about it. This one is showing no traffic, no traffic coming out um from the uh where my finger is pointing right here, no traffic. And it's showing a pickup drop off s- spot up on Haverford Avenue and absolutely no other cars in the square at all. So it's all program space. Which I've only called it civic amenity space.
Yeah, I.
That's that option. It should also.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna be definitive about this because it obviously needs a lot more design study. But to the degree that I have looked at, at the Cook site, you know, my, my take on it, at least sitting here right now, is that there's, there's no practical way to egress traffic onto Narberth Avenue. At least from that, that, that level of parking, you're considerably down below grade of where Narberth Avenue is at that point. And to be able to get some kind of a ramp structure up to Narberth Avenue um would, would, I, I think be very, very difficult in terms of the area that it would take, you know, and obliterate the amount of space that you need to provide parking for any development of that site. And would also preclude the possibility of having a second deck of parking that can have ingress and egress off of Narberth. So I, you know, and again, I, I don't wanna say, you know, I know for certain this won't work, but I suspect strongly it won't work. And that, that gets us back to having an e- eh, either a two-way traffic flow in and out off of Haverford Avenue, which is, I think, problematic. Uh, any, any egress onto Haverford Avenue, I think, along that block is problematic. Which, which leads actually, you know, to the, to the solution of, of having a, a traffic way, one way out along the edge of the stations uh of the, the town square, which, which you know, obviously needs a lot more study, but I don't see as inherently problematic.
Uh, just one more comment about um having a pedestrian access behind those buildings. Um, the, I can't think of what the business is there now. There's Metatechnical, and then there's that other little studio. Is it the brief, brief studio? Um, and that is about accessible platforms, train platforms. They may well be better positioned further east along the track there where the grade is more favorable to having uh to having a um, a train platform that uh, you know, that you don't have to walk up steps. You may wanna push that platform a little further east. So I would be wary of constructing something back there that is, that may, that would preclude that as a solution.
Heidi, what are your thoughts?
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I mean, I've been looking at this for many years too. I, I, Jim, I, Cornwall, I really appreciate your sketches. I thought you touched on just about every plausible scheme that would have come to my mind. Um, I, I, I always thought that there should be an exit out. Um, and that maybe the amount of traffic that you actually be talking about across of just a portion of Station Circle would be reasonable. Um, and, and maybe even a few parking spaces, the diagonal parking spaces that were suggested. You do still need a drop off point for ta- taking people with the train. That's just required, a requirement. And whether it's part-time or full-time, I mean, it is possible to put more parking spaces along Haverford, maybe diagonal that could be designated for drop off at certain times like Dave was suggesting. Um, but I do wonder, I mean, you said, Dave, that you don't think it could be circular from Narberth to Haverford. I mean, there is that entrance up there now. Why couldn't they incorporate that?
Well, think, think about that in the other direction, thinking about trying to nose out in, into traffic and, and worrying about pedestrians and having traffic zipping by there in this very tight space. Yeah, I guess for me too, it, it brings up the whole question of trying to preserve those two historic buildings on either side of that, of that driveway. And so, you know, I've come to the conclusion that it works, it doesn't work great, but it works as a way to get into that parking. But I just don't believe it works getting out of that parking.
Oh, why couldn't you have the exit beyond Narberth? I mean, that, that's presumably.
Because of the gray, there's a lot, there's a big grade change.
Well, I know, but when the little gym is gone, which I assume that's part of the plan.
We don't.
I mean, that's, that opens up that whole strip to be recreated.
But the amount of ramp area you would need to get up there will obliterate any, any uh possibility for making a parking scheme that, you know, that's viable, I think. I mean, I haven't.
I don't know, it's pretty wide swath when you take the gym building out. So I don't know. Um, but I mean, I do think having it circular around is probably not a bad idea, even if it's just for, you know, emergency access um at least.
You know, one of the points we're try, one of the places we're trying to get to with this conversation is whether a egress through the, through the um territory of the, of the Station Circle is inimical to the redevelopment of Station Circle. And, and I think, just to cut this conversation short a little bit, I think we, I think there are schemes that would work with or without egress through that, through that space. And it wouldn't be, it wouldn't kill the potential for the property there to be beneficially used for civic purposes. In the hands of a, of a decent designer, we can make that work. So I think that was, uh, Todd, the, the decision point you were trying to get to.
One of them, yeah.
There, there are dozens of ways to skin this cat from a, from a uh traffic planning and landscape design standpoint. We don't, we don't have to do that tonight.
Yeah.
One other.
I'd like to share my thoughts and then maybe we can figure out a way to move on. Um, there's two key moves here, uh, which could be independent of each other or combined. One is to remove the kind of circular flow of traffic around the circle, which I think we all probably have experienced peaks when trains drop people off. You know, that around five o'clock when that train comes into place is a mess with cars trying to circle around there. And the other is, is the egress from the parking in the back, which is more of a slow drip. I mean, it, it's not, it's spread out over time more than the commuter pickup, drop off kind of stuff. And I think that if you look at both of those as issues, I, I actually think that the way that cars try to circle around there to wait for passengers and pick them up is the most problematic feature of that area. Um, particularly because they have to cross that same stretch of Haverford Avenue twice as they loop around. It just creates extra car movements and traffic. I think eliminating that goes a long way to making that place an amenity. And I, and I agree with Jim Cornwell that managing the slow drip of egress from the parking area is, is much easier and probably quite believable. Uh, I agree with Dave Brower also. I, I find whether the ramping is an issue or not, I find the turning out of that lot area onto Narberth Avenue to be highly problematic because I would anticipate most of the people leaving would wanna make a left turn. Either they're gonna make a left turn, which is, you know, a hard turn to make because you can't actually see the traffic coming from the bridge very well. Or they're gonna make a right turn and go through a residential neighborhood, and I don't think people are gonna like that very much. Um, so I feel like too much egress onto Narberth Avenue is very, very problematic. And plus, all those cars are gonna, not all, but many of them are gonna have to go the whole way down Haverford Avenue. So again, we're pumping more cars through Haverford Avenue for not a lot of gain. So my feeling is that the key move is removing the circular motion and egress through that space, Station Circle is manageable.
Todd.
It's my thought.
Todd, can I just tack on one thought, just to, just for everybody to consider that the egress through Station Circle today is, you know, the, the parking lot behind there, it's a relatively sleepy parking lot. It's used a lot by employees. You know, there's not a lot of traffic that has to egress throughout the day. However, that's a different thing from egress for a large development, and we may have an increase in volume uh that comes through that if we keep that as egress, as the, particularly as a sole egress.
Yeah, wish course.
Or whatever.
You can't wish them away. I mean, they're gonna be there. And I think dumping them out on the Narberth is, if you consider that everyone's pretty much is gonna have to make a left turn coming out of there is highly problematic.
Everyone's gonna have to make a left turn onto Haverford off of Station Circle.
Yeah, but Jim, they're not crossing a lane of opposing traffic to make that left turn. Right? And it's not a blind turn the way it is onto Narberth Avenue. I mean, it's pretty. And again, it may be more cars, but it's not gonna be a rush hour like you get with the cars that now go there to pick people up at night. So I think it's much more manageable that way. Um, I think that's the point, that's a decision point that I think we're really looking for advice on. So that's the kind of question to focus on and think about over the next few weeks before we meet again is that choice point of, of whether or not there can be egress. I think it sounds to me like there's a pretty strong consensus that ingress to parking through Station Circle is not a good idea. It's mostly whether or not cars could exit. Um, that's something to think more.
Well, let, let me ask a broader question. Where are we hoping to go with this? Are we, are we hoping to have a point where we recommend to council that a design team be hired with, with the intent of providing proposals of what might happen there in a real way? Or, or is this just to talk about, gee, it'd be nice if we could do this someday?
Well, I think most practically, Dave, it's important to do this to clarify our thoughts because we're gonna be asked to comment on this in the context of two thirty Haverford. That's the first chance we have, right? We're gonna have to have some thoughts about how circulation to that site worked. And when we have to think about that, we have to think about Station Circle. So where we go with it, number one, is to make sure that whatever happens with two thirty Haverford is consistent with what we think the best course is for Station Circle, uh, even if it takes a while to get there. Um, beyond that, um, I think we have to think about what the, what, what the possible outcomes are. Could we recommend that? Yes. Um, could we recommend that some study of that be done concurrently with the development of two thirty Haverford? Might be a nice idea. So you know, that, that could be an outcome.
Well, it certainly makes sense to think of the two things as a coherent design problem. You know, and, and that's not to say that the same team has to be working on the design of two thirty Haverford. Uh, eh, eh, and be also designing the Station Circle at the same time. But I agree that it's, it, it makes sense to think of the, of the whole issue holistically. Um, but I think at the end of the day, you know, eh, eh, you know, as, as a, as a designer is that you get a lot more when you have a design team sitting down and, and getting paid to think about the problem than, than coming to it once a month and just kind of talking about it. So I, you know, I'm, I thi- I think we could, we certainly have the experience in this group to kind of bat around a lot of ideas. But putting to, putting them together as a coherent uh, you know, package of information is, is an entirely different uh, you know, scope of work.
Well, you know, it is somewhere in the comprehensive plan. That's one of the actions recommended. So, I mean, that could be an outcome of this, Dave, for sure. Um, I think right now, for sh- even more sure than that is we have to have clear thoughts on this because uh, the development of two thirty Haverford is gonna rely on there being some kind of clear vision for Station Circle, maybe a designed vision, but a kind of programmatic or functional vision like Jim was trying to make. So, um.
Well, I think, I think from that, from that standpoint, it would not be difficult and Jim and Heidi and anybody else feel pretty discreet, but I think we can probably just fill this down to five or six major bullet points of, of design objectives that, that could service guidance as we go forward.
Well, that, that's exactly what I'm trying to do, Dave, uh, with this first work effort that you have, that you now have uh copies of. And if, I think, I think to uh, if everyone would, would, would think about their own, would put together their own thoughts about the, the priorities that they see and get them in my hands between now and the next time we talk about this, um, we will be able to create that bullet list pretty readily and, uh, certainly have a draft of it for discussion next time.
Can you send us what you wrote already?
Yeah, you've got it already.
Okay. I, I mean, I have the drawings, but were you reading from something you wrote?
No.
Oh, my goodness. So we'll have to give you that tape.
He's been doing this a long time.
Well, no, he said, he was reading from his drawing, the first drawing that he sent.
Okay, okay. I didn't, I, I would, I don't have it on my screen. I need to. Okay. So I think that's, Jim, that's a good way to plug feedbacks that we can crystallize this a little next time. Hopefully, next time we talk about this will be.
Yeah. It's a, it's a very complicated problem from a design standpoint. And a- arriving at a solution is, will take some, will take some doing.
Right. Um, I, I know it's late. I do think it's important to talk about um frontage widths and frontage scales because that's something council has asked us to refine in terms of the current issues on the table. Jim, you and I worked on that. Jim, you and I worked on that, Mr. Cornwell. Since you, um, led the conversation about the, um, station circle, do you mind if I read the notes on the scale issues?
Take it away, take it away.
Okay, so, um, Jim and I looked at two issues. One was, um, we really tried to understand the pattern of storefront widths, frontage widths on Haverford Avenue. Jim Spear will be happy to know, we actually used a standard deviation analysis.
Awesome, nice.
It lends credibility to the, to what you're about to hear.
My slide rule. Um, we also, um, less rigorously, um, but just as enlighteningly, um, tried to get a better grasp of how buildings are organized vertically. So that we can look at that more carefully in terms of whether our code is strong enough in defining the different elements of a facade. So I'll start with the storefront widths because that is a, a raw number that we need to get to, to answer council's question. So what we did is we measured the shopfront widths um, and the widths of other ground floor elements on the buildings on Haverford between Narberth and Essex. And this was a guesstimate in a way, we use Google Earth in our sort of sense of scale. Um, so these are not, you know, precise engineering measurements, but they're pretty close. And we, we did not measure the station circle building, the wine and cheese shop, but all the buildings on the other blocks. And we counted thirty-two shop fronts. And interestingly, we counted thirty-two doors that lead to upper levels. So there's thirteen buildings that have upper levels with specific entries onto Haverford Avenue. So what we found then by, through our measurements is the average shopfront width on Haverford Avenue is about twenty feet. However, when you filter out the outliers, the, the, those which are one standard deviation or above uh, the, the, uh, distribution, uh, that would be four outliers, Rickland's, Twice Is Nice, American Family Market, and Get Cafe. The average shopfront, uh, becomes seventeen and a half feet. So that's that center of that bell curve. In both cases, the median shopfront's about sixteen feet, that's the most frequent width we have. Or that's the middle if you stack, I mean, that's the middle if you stack them all in order. Um, there might also be the, the mode as well. So we're really looking at sixteen, seventeen, eighteen feet. Maybe if we include all stores, twenty feet, that's a standard shopfront width in Haverford Avenue. And maybe about forty percent of the buildings not only have shopfronts, but also extra doors that lead to upper levels. Um, so that led us to conclude that in looking for a number for council, that a good number for maximum storefront, uh, shopfront should be about twenty feet, uh, which is in the high end of those averages that, that we saw. It's a little bigger than typical, but not much bigger than typical. In a, in a, um, sixty-five foot wide building, which is, I think, the largest lot we measured, that would allow three, three shop fronts and a doorway that goes upstairs. We also felt that because upper level entrances or entrances to upper levels are so prevalent that for any building of one story, um, there should be a, of more than one story, I'm sorry. So a two-story building, or if there ever is a new three-story building, a three-story building, there should be a continuation of the practice of having doors that provide access to the spaces from Haverford Avenue. So, you know, if someone were to build a two-story or three-story building, they couldn't have the upper levels just dumped to the back of the lot. They need to dump, they need to have access to Haverford Avenue, both to continue the complexity of the street front, but also to put those feet on our main street. Um, and I note that the development at one hundred Conway does have its residential lobby on Haverford, but the development at two oh three Haverford does not. It has its residential lobby on Essex. Um, which is maybe okay because it's a corner building. So anyway, that was our take on the widths of shop fronts. And I, what I would like to do before the ladies of us arrive at a number, whether it's twenty or something else that we can give to council for the maximum shopfront width. In terms of the vertical composition of buildings, um, this is probably urban designer architecture one oh one. But there's, we just, we discerned five distinct bands from the bottom to the top of the building. Um, the base of the building, you know, or the, up, up to like knee height of the building, um, the shop window. Both of those, by the way, um, there are dimensions for those things in our, in our code. The, the window dimensions and the height of that base. Um, beyond that, above that, there's a sign band or some kind of band above the windows, which is often occupied by signs or awnings. Above that is the, if it's a building of more than one story, there's an upper level facade, uh, usually almost always with, uh, punched windows. And above that is a cornice line, roof line, or parapet, sometimes, um, a parapet with a cornice. Um, we didn't scale the dimensions of these bands, but we wondered whether our, um, frontage guidelines, either our frontage zoning or potential guidelines if we had a historic, you know, regulation, um, should include more detail about those upper levels. The sign band, the second story band, and the cornice line. So what we would want to ask you is, um, is to kind of revisit, revisit the shopfront width to see if twenty feet makes sense, or there's another number that feels right. And whether or not we should go ahead and look more in a more detailed way at the sign bands, the upper level composition and the cornice slash parapet slash, um, roof line to see if we need stronger, um, standards in our code that buildings need to meet. Those are the two questions we bring back to you. That's the report.
Be taking comments now?
From you? Anytime, as long as we're in session, yes.
Uh, so, uh, just, I was thinking about this too and, yeah, um, and one thing that occurred to me is that the businesses downtown, they, some like to have wider storefronts and some like to have smaller. And it occurs to me that the businesses have never been shy about dividing up spaces when there was a space that's too big, like the bookstore and whatever's next to the bookstore, you know, that was formerly one big space. Uh, I can think of a couple of other, other instances of that, that, you know, down the road, there's a dry cleaner that is also a plant shop, you know? I can think of, um, you know, the old Mapes that took up three distinct storefronts. You know, and essentially ran it as one large business. Uh, the old prior to Twice Is Nice contracting, it took up two storefronts. So I, I was wondering, you know, I appreciate that you've found a, you know, an average ideal in twenty. But I'm not so convinced that we should put, make that as a hard limit. And I wonder if you would consider making it double. Like make, if, if twenty is the ideal shop width, why not make the upper limit forty? And then allow, uh, developer, you know, a potential developer or a potential business owner to div- to divide those spaces as necessary.
Well, if the upper limit is forty, they could always divide the spaces as necessary. So what you're sort of arguing for is to get that one rare exception, you'd, you'd be willing to let all of them be forty feet potentially. So one of the things that council just, they did discuss that issue, um, and one of the thoughts was could different types of uses be, you know, ones that we wanted to give a privilege to, could those be larger, like supermarket? Um, another consideration would be we could make the widths wider on side streets as opposed to Haverford Avenue. But I would, while I understand, you know, there's some that are bigger and some like it that way. The question is, once you make a maximum or a ma- a maximum width, that applies to everybody. And, you know, you have to, you can't say, well, we'll give forty feet to Mapes unless you actually write it somehow. So i- i- if you make the maximum bigger, you're, you, you're basically saying that's what, you know, it's possible that that's what you'll get. Uh, all of your sixteen-foot stores replaced with forty-foot stores. Just because maybe there might be one nice one one day, so that, that's, that would be my concern about that. Heidi, did you want to comment?
Well, no, I was just thinking what Jim, to further what Jim Spear was saying is that, I mean, they, the, the idea of the twenty-foot width is a visual one, it's not necessarily what's going on behind the glass. And the fact that they've been able to divide, subdivide, come back together, you know, I mean, it's, that's kind of a nice, um, opportunity, I mean, anomaly or opportunity for businesses as they feel that they could grow and not, not change the appearance from the outside.
One of the things we're looking for is a rhythm along the street, it seems to me. And that rhythm is more important than the number of businesses that are behind the glass. So I agree with Heidi. When you, as you walk down the street, if you perceive that the, that one business is sixty-five feet wide, it's gonna feel out of scale with all the other little businesses that are on the twen- on the order of twenty feet wide. But it's a matter of the, how the, how the shopfront is subdivided.
I mean, that's really common, I mean, you see this in all, in cities everywhere that, you know, a restaurant might have a small front and then they grow, so they grow into the building next door. I mean, that's kind of a nice thing, I mean, it, it doesn't hurt the appearance and the way it fits into the town.
McChey is an example, as is the Greeks, you know, they, both of them have, have, um,
Two fronts.
And they got two frontages, two fronts, one, uh, two separate enterprises going really under one, uh, management.
Okay, I buy that.
Dave, what's your?
I did have a, sorry?
I just wanted to ask Dave what his thought was. He looks like he's in.
He's muted.
Not me, not me.
Not you, what do you mean not you? I just asked what you thought.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you, you, you heard somebody, I thought it was Maggie, you say, what do I think? I, I say, I, I agree with, with what's been said. It has to do with the rhythm, um, you know, and, and how you, you break up, you know, the, the extent of a wider storefront. Uh, you know, I, I would, you know, maybe ricochet this off in a little bit different direction and, and wonder where retail is heading. And it, this gets back to the earlier conversation that you and I had about, you know, and Jim has brought up for numerous times in the past about having some kind of a, a Main Street manager who can help guide us in understanding the future of retail and how that might affect us. I don't know if this affects design decisions that we make now about how to keep the scale right on the street, but I think it would help inform some of the decisions we make. But I agree with everything that's been said about the need to, to keep the scale to a pedestrian scale and, and, you know, and break up the large storefronts accordingly.
But are you, um, I think, I think some of the comment has been that there shouldn't be an absolute shopfront width or sh- or, or basically store width of twenty feet. Try to figure out how things could be a little more organic, you know, a shop could expand into another shop over time if it needed to. The, the, the difference, I think people are seeing between the visual appearance and maybe the porosity of the facades versus the number of businesses on the street.
Yeah, and, and I would agree with that, I think that has more to do with about, you know, the, the rhythm that you're setting up between solid and, you know, solid wall and glass area and, and perhaps maximum sizes or minimum sizes of those elements. Uh, as opposed to how many businesses we're talking about, or what the width of a business is.
I think a counterargument that council would make based on what I heard from them at the meeting last week. I think there are some people who are inclined to want, absolutely want smaller businesses because they think, they think it is a variety of businesses, not just.
Well, well, and again, this, this guy, the, the bit of beating a dead horse. This gets into, we need some expertise to tell us if those, if those businesses in fact exist anymore. And if they do, how do we find them? I mean, we, we could want something to happen, but that doesn't mean that the economics of it will allow it to happen.
Would you, uh, if we could figure out a way to allow for a kind of more of the kind of progression, I think Heidi described it really well. What would you say the limit would be, forty feet, or would it be like a twenty-foot design module, but a forty-foot functional space? What? We still have to put numbers on it one way or the other.
Why? Why don't we just say it's a multiple of twenty? And that what you perceive as you walk down the street are no, no, or, or modules no more than twenty feet. Isn't that what we're trying to get at?
Has a door?
So you have a, so you have a.
What, what does a module include?
What's that?
What does a module include? A door and a window or, or just one element or, or what?
Yeah, it's one element.
Okay.
So that nowhere do you have a, a, a stretch of glass or uh, or a stretch of one material that's, that's, it's greater than twenty feet. And it doesn't matter if your American Family Market has three of those because it's a big, it's a big store. Or it's a, you know, the, the, uh, the bookstore that's got one of them. Because it's the rhythm that you, that, that you perceive as you walk down the street.
I would argue that you can't go, I mean, just notwithstanding American Family Market, this is like the discussion we had about houses on Dudley. I think the number of doors is critical. Going too far, forty feet without a door is, can be, no matter what the window patterns are, material patterns are, that can be a real killer. Even the old Mapes had more doors, they didn't use them all the time.
Let's go say, that's because they aggregated so many stores.
Yeah.
Some of the, some of the, some of the doors were never used as stores.
Yes.
So how, for a business that large to exist, do they have to bust through building walls? You know, supporting walls to, to get to that way?
Well, Mapes did.
No.
They didn't?
Mapes did.
Oh, Mapes did, okay, and I think the old Twice Is Nice did as well, you know, the Twice Is Nice and what is now the Get Cafe. There, there's, there was, there's a doorway that goes right through the wall. I mean, are we, is that, are we asking businesses that want to grow that large that they're gonna just have to do that, bust through, uh, bust through retaining walls?
Sure, that's what they, if, if that's, that's the impediment they face.
Unless you're asking them to, like, what if the cooked properties, what if end up being all torn down on the south side of Haverford? I mean, that's the scenario whereby they're building all new. I, it's a good question, Jim, I mean, do you say they have twenty-foot walls going the length of the property, you know, perpendicular to Haverford? I don't know.
I'm, I'm inclined, I mean, again, like with Dudley, we sort of have to decide what, is there something we could agree upon now, even though it might require more work?
I mean, I think the appearance of smaller facades is what we're after. Ultimately, does that, is that odd if it's a whole new building? I, I mean, it, it works well when you have a bunch of old storefronts and you're allowing people to combine.
Well, right now, we have a maximum building width of sixty-five feet.
And that's what American Family is?
It's, that's more like forty, forty-five feet. Sixty-five, I think, is close to the street, I think it was actually seventy-five foot, although I'm not sure where the property lines go. I think we looked, I looked at the lot lines and sixty-five is about the widest lot we had on Haverford, which is why we picked sixty-five feet. But I, but breaking that up is the question, and what I, I guess maybe what I'd suggest for tonight is, um, given what you guys have said, is that maybe it's more reasonable to say that the maximum width should be about forty feet.
I think so.
That there, that there should be twenty, there should be some twenty-foot module of some sort. And I think we need to go back and find the language for that.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
There's a sort of a, there's sort of a nod of language in the definition section about what is a shopfront and what is a facade and it's not very consistent. So whatever we end up. So whatever we end up recommending, I think we might need to take a look at the definitions sections and make sure they're, they agree with each other.
Okay, but I'm pretty sure we've done, we've done that. And so shop front is a word that was used but never defined before, and so we're now using it more rigorously. But if it's odd, is the width of the building, and a shop front is a smaller module that is one of the approved frontages. And basically what we say in the code is, the building itself may have multiple shop fronts in it. And so what we have to do is, if the maximum width of a shop front is going to be forty feet, then we also have to come up with a design module that's twenty feet. So we have to work on that a little bit.
Right. That's what you really want.
Okay, but I think that's good guidance that we can work with for new language.
If I can just pop in real fast, that was a consideration that I noted in my, in my notes. But shop front currently is defined as simply a frontage on the first floor that is primarily transparent and faces a frontage line. So we have the definition, but I noted in here that we should probably, if we want to include more rigorous design guidelines for shop fronts, the definition might need to be updated, and at that point, it almost becomes a frontage type. What's that?
It is a frontage type.
But we're using it right, but we're using it in a way that might warrant a more robust definition in the definitions, unless we think that the frontage typology is sufficient.
That's the idea, is that the definition is a definition of that frontage typology. We're not trying to have a generic definition for storefront. So, but if there's some issue of consistency there, I mean, hopefully your notes will flag that so we can look at it.
Yeah, and the, just the other thing is that if we're going to put a width limit on it, if it's maximum forty feet, we just need to consider if our maximum building width is sixty-five feet, then we could get one forty-foot frontage and one twenty-five foot frontage. So it could be broken up in multiples. So just if, the forty works, since we're not requiring anybody to be maximum of forty.
Well, I hate to second guess what I suggested before, but if they build something less than forty, then that can't easily be divided. Like, if they build a thirty-five or a thirty, you can't really bust that up into two fifteens.
Well, the maximum, we could have modules that are maximum twenty feet and they could come up with fifteen. I mean, we have storefronts as narrow as thirteen feet. We have plenty of sixteen-feet storefronts, and so both from a design and a functional point of view, it's a workable module. I just don't think we need to say the module exactly the same, the maximum of the same.
It's the, it's the perceived module, don't forget.
Yeah.
It's not what's behind, what's behind the facade. It's what's in front of the facade that matters here.
Yeah, but as far as business diversity goes, I think, you know, we want the small shops to come in.
I wouldn't limit how big the store is. I would limit, I would limit how, how big the, the perceived module on the sidewalk is. So that, so that you don't get stretches that are longer than twenty feet. And if behind that, you had a sixty-foot business.
Yeah.
That would be okay.
The one concern, the one concern I recall from watching the council meeting was that we don't, we don't want to allow like a large brew pub or something, you know, something like exists at a strip mall or, what's that one on Greenwood Ave in Nardmore? You know, there's like a big
Iron Hands.
Iron Hill, right.
Oh, the Iron Hill.
Yeah.
Well, the parking is going to limit that. We don't really, we don't have that problem.
I don't think that, I don't know why we're worried about that. I don't, for one thing, I agree, the parking is going to control that. And as we, as we decided years and years ago, as we discussed this stuff, big businesses are not going to find Narberth an attractive place to set up shop. Because it, because it's, there's no, there's no opportunity for drive-through, there are no big parking lots, et cetera, et cetera. We went through that already. What we're trying to do here, I think, is to control the texture of the streetscape. And that's the only thing that matters to me. And if we had a, if we had, if by some magic, there were, there were an Iron Hill brew pub that wanted to be on, be in Narberth and compete with the Greeks and McShays, that's, that's the, that's the world of business. I very much doubt they would want to do that. But if they did do it, we would want them to, that we would want their facade, the street-level facade to be broken up into no more than twenty-foot bikes.
So guys, I think we can all agree that the design, I mean, facade needs to be into small increments. The question we're debating is, should we also have a maximum increment for an actual store? I think Jim is saying that that doesn't matter to him. I'm, I'm saying perhaps forty feet. So I guess we need to settle that in order to finalize these recommendations to come. I would just say that, at least the tenor of the last conversation with council was they were interested in having a maximum limit for storefront, I mean, for an actual store. Not just as a design proposition, but as a functional opposition. So let's just sort of take a shot at you guys and see where they are, where we are. So first, we'll just ask, who, who's in favor of, you know, maintaining a design of a certain amount, maybe twenty feet, but having no limits on the actual width of a, the Jim, Jim's position? Who, who's, who feels that way? Jim?
No limit at all.
Wait, wait, wait. Let's go with Dave Brower. What do you, what do you feel about that?
No, I agree with Jim. I think what, what we're really dealing with here is the rhythm, not the, not the width. I, yeah, I think, well, okay, maybe
I'm sorry, taking votes because it's late. Jim Spear, how do you feel about that one?
Uh, no, I think we need limit, I think we need to have a limit. I agree with the module idea of, you know, twenty feet is nice, seems right.
I'd like to have a limit.
Okay, and I vote, we have a limit on stores too, so that's three to two. So what we'll do is come back, see if we can come back with some language about that with you guys.
Okay.
It's not a consensus, it's better to have a consensus. So for the time being, we will put a module recommendation in the council, respecting this is a difference of opinion about this, we'll work at the other issue, continue to work on it. Sorry to cut you off, but it's late and we just need to know who we vote.
Speaking of limits.
Yeah, it's time to end the meeting, I think. But we had to talk about that because that's part of what council asked us for. So we have a couple of other topics which we can take up next time. Retail and office viability, parking, you all have a report on parking, pretty detailed report on parking that Dave and I worked on. And we'll come back with further discussion of station circle, ground floor frontages. And we didn't tackle, but the question for you all is, if there are any buildings specifically to be preserved downtown, what would they be? So please send your votes for that. So with that, one or, oh, finally, public comment. I've received no emails during the course of this meeting, so having none, I will close public comment. I will say I received an email from George Mooseburner, who asks that we review the code provisions related to side yards in residential districts. A recent ruling on a zoning variance, I think being November, has essentially gutted the required seven-point, seven-inch side yard setback for residential properties. And then there's a statement about how people with money get what they want. I think in order to consider this comment, we do need to go back and look at the record of what the zoning hearing board considered and what it decided, I mean, to understand the facts of the case. We'll try and get that information to see. It was a building on one oh six Conway, I think, or something.
Yeah, that's the one with a nine-foot-high fence. Really tall fence that they got a variance for.
That is, really?
Different one, because I went and looked at it the other day and took a picture. I don't recall the fence.
It's a different
I think that was a different property.
One oh five is different, yeah.
Oh.
It's, it's a twin with a very, very narrow setback to its property line.
If it's the property that was mentioned in conjunction with this letter, I wasn't able to find a zoning hearing board decision related to that property at all. I mean, they seem to have adjourned on that issue and, and the applicant dropped it. So I'm not sure what, you definitely need to research what this refers to because I can't figure it out.
But that's what we need to do because it's, we need to see the actual back documentation of the matter to understand if there's a problem. So we will look into that since it was raised. Okay, so with that, motion adjourned?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for this newfangled way of doing meetings. I hope we never have to do it again.
But we still do it two weeks, right?
Yeah, I'm afraid, and it doesn't look like things will change by then. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks all, have a good night.
Thank you, bye.
Drive safely, everyone.